I will call this evening's meeting of the Clayton City Council on December 4th to order. Ask that you all, well, excuse me, roll call, want to show that Vice Mayor David Shuey is absent. He's already indicated to us he had a prior business engagement. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the consent calendar. I do want to note that on the consent calendar, we have a resolution that the council is being asked to adopt as part of the consent calendar, and I thought certainly the audience would like to hear this portion of the consent calendar, and it's that we were asked to adopt a resolution certifying the results of the canvas of returns in the November 2018 general municipal election and declaring that Jeff Wan and Carl C.W. Wolf were elected to four-year terms of public office on the city council of the city of Clayton, California. So we'll be addressing that later this evening, but I wanted to let you know that that's one of the items on our consent calendar.
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
Been moved in second, do we approve the consent calendar as proposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous in those. So moving on then to recognitions and presentations. So this is one of our favorite sections on the agenda when we're able to do this. This is in support of the Do the Right Thing program here in Clayton. And this evening, we're going to be recognizing the trait of respect. It's one of the character traits recognized in the Do the Right Thing program. And respect for this particular application is defined to be using good manners, not bad language, and being considerate, honoring feelings of others, and dealing peaceably with anger, insults, and disagreements. So this is the trait that the three schools that are represented this evening were asked to identify students that they felt exemptified these particular traits. So all three schools have nominated students to be recognized for this particular trait. So I'm going to have a representative from each school come up and announce the winners from their school. First off would be from the Mount Diablo Elementary School, Mrs. Pike. Good. You have two students you'd like to recognize this evening?
We do. I'd like to bring up Daylon and Nathan.
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Alexandra Pike. I have a loud teacher voice, but I will hold this. Good evening. My name is Alexandra Pike, and I teach second grade at Mount Diablo Elementary School. And we have two superstars here tonight that we want to recognize for respect. Thank you, City of Clayton, for taking the time to honor them. For Daylon, I wrote a couple things here, and for Nathan. As educators, we not only focus on teaching academics, but we also work on character development. We want our students to be kind, caring individuals who know right from wrong and do the right thing. These two individuals here do it every single day at Mount Diablo Elementary. Not only are they role models for our classroom, but they're actually role models for our whole school. Please and thank you are exhibited daily. They're kind, considerate to their classmates. They share, and they take care of each other, they help their teacher. They are just amazing students, and I'm so glad to be able to be here tonight to recognize them. Thank you so much. Okay, so this is Daylon Shapiro. Congratulations for your doing the right thing on respect. And this is Nathan. Help me with your last name.
Stan Odovitch.
Stan Odovitch, awesome. Thank you so much.
We're going to get a group picture. You want one? Okay. Yes, yes. No, 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 you're part of this. Yes, yes. Good, thank you. Yes, they can stand aside, but we're going to have two other schools recognized. So the Mount Diablo Middle School, Patty Banister. And you also have two students.
I do. I have Shelley. Where's Shelley? Shelley Subaxin.
Subaxin.
Subaxin. And Danny Echo. So these two students, you know, looking around, when I look for students that we want to represent Diablo View, these two students are really standouts. They're eighth graders, and I always like to go back and look through their cume, and I think their parents should be very proud because you look through it and it's consistent throughout their schooling so far. Shelley is always, always has a smile, both of these students always have wonderful smiles. They're so respectful. They're respectful to their peers. Their teachers talk about how they can always count on them. They're great students, and they apply their academics quite well. Shelley is in our leadership class. And Danny, again, is always has that bright smile. He is just a super kid that, you know, everybody would want to take him home. He's quite, well, maybe your mother doesn't think that always, but, you know, he's a kid too that both of these are that you would love to be able to say that they belong to you. So congratulations.
Quick shot of them. Excellent. And last up then will be the Clayton Valley Charter High School, Bob Ralston. Okay, so we have two students we'd like to honor as well, Clayton County High School, Charter High School. We have Annalisa Jimenez and Gabe Martin. Are any of them here? They're not here. I think I got set up on this deal, didn't I?
Doing homework.
Oh, is she coming right now? Okay. Okay, well, both students are outstanding students, and they've earned a lot of respect amongst their peers and their teachers. And, you know, they both have tremendous positive attitudes, they're infectious amongst their classmates and in the classroom, and both care for their students in the classrooms and on their teams, and more importantly, they like to help others. And we're very proud of both of our students, so thank you very much.
Are the other students coming?
We're going to wait for, we have Annalisa. We'd like to get a group shot of all the students being recognized. She is coming in, she gonna be here in a few minutes? We'd like her to be recognized here with the rest of the group.
There you go.
Absolutely. Sorry, Gabe couldn't join us, but he'll get that, I'm sure. Well, thank you, everyone. This is usually one of the highlights of the quarterly recognition for this program. This is a great program that we've implemented here in Clayton to recognize these traits when they're demonstrated by our students. And very often, these students are often recognized as they grow older and move on to other schools as well. Want to get in, Bob, too? All right. All right, bear with us just for a moment if we can. Tell you what, I'm going to do the next thing. If you can wait up here, we'll wait, oh, here she comes. Here she comes, okay. You can actually recognize her here, Bob. Okay, Annalisa, congratulations. You were honored by Clayton Valley High School for a character trait of respect, and we're very proud to have you as one of our students, and we appreciate your kindness and your respect towards others, and more importantly, your caring attitude for your classmates.
Let's get, let's get just the kids, and then we'll get the teacher. We got the teacher, yeah. There you go.
You made it through school.
Good, thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item. That's really just an opportunity to let the two outgoing council members make some comments. As I indicated, Vice Mayor Shuey was unable to join us this evening, regrettably. He had a previous commitment. But I certainly want to share a few comments. It's been a real honor and privilege to serve the residents. Yes, the students and their families and friends don't have to stay for the rest of the program.
But there is cake.
Steak, yes.
So I'm ending my four-year term on the council. I served a number of other assignments in Clayton, but I always wanted to serve on the council before I retired from my city service, public service, and I was able to do that when I was elected four years ago. So I really appreciate the opportunity to serve on the council. It's been a wonderful educational experience. And anyone that begins to follow the city council and all we're able to accomplish, I think, can appreciate the work that goes into running this city. And the city council makes a lot of the decisions, but really, the day-to-day operations here in the city are performed by the city staff. But before I move on to that, I do want to recognize that as I grew into the position here on the council, I want to recognize two of my mentors who really helped me understand what's expected of a city council person. And certainly, the biggest thing is always being prepared and doing your homework, and that's Howard Geller and Julie Pierce. So want to recognize them, and they've been a great asset, both to the city of Clayton while they have both been on the city council, but their willingness to help everyone understand what the council does and why we make our decisions. And getting back then to staff, certainly, what we accomplish here in Clayton is in great respect and because we have such an excellent city staff here. And it's a small staff, certainly not near as large as our neighbors, but they're able to accomplish many of the same functions on a really streamlined staff, and that's because most of them take on additional duties and perform much more than the typical department head and city staff members. Starting off, certainly Gary Napper, who is our excellent city manager and one of the best, and I had thought it was best in the county, but in talking to other people around, represented beyond the county, I think he's certainly one of the best in the state, and we're very fortunate to have him because he's able to apply the experience he's gained, not only in other assignments, but he's been here in Clayton now for about 20 years. So he's an excellent resource and makes sure that the council's decisions are carried out and the day-to-day operations run smoothly. Janet Calderon, our city clerk, is certainly our admin help for the city council and for the city manager as well. Laura Hoffmeister, who's unable to join us, is the assistant to the city manager, and she carries out many of the duties, working with the residents and the different community groups, and carries out just even working the front desk and dealing with our residents. And then we certainly have an additional staff of excellent department heads. Mindy Gentry is our community development director. Kevin Menizo is our finance director. Jim Warburton is our new supervisor of the maintenance department. Scott Almond is our city engineer and one of our newest members, and that's our new chief of police, Chief Elsa Warren, Elise, excuse me, Elise Warren. So again, I want to thank Clayton, actually, for allowing me to serve in this role, but recognize also that the big reason Clayton is the wonderful community we all enjoy is in large part because of the staff that makes sure that all of the needs are being met. So thanks again, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, before we continue with the rest of the meeting, I just wanted to make a couple of comments about our outgoing vice mayor and mayor. There really isn't an appropriate time listed here, but before we move on, I really want to recognize the work that David Shuey has done. He was the vice mayor this year. He served on the council for 16 years, and for that, we thank him very much. He also worked for four years before that on the Community Services Commission. He was on our original Community Services Commission. He headed up the Grove Park Design Committee. He was one of those who jumped in with both feet to help us figure out what we wanted to be and how we wanted to do some of the things we're doing in the community. He worked on our landscape maintenance measures, as did Keith, and just was always there to volunteer, to lend a really experienced ear and his expertise in construction claims law when we had issues with any of our contracts. David gave his heart and soul to this city and will continue to, I know he will continue to, and so for that, we want to absolutely thank him from the depths of our heart for that. Keith, I have known you since we started together on the Board of Directors at the Westwood Homeowners Association a very long time ago, and you're still on it, still president of it, as a matter of fact. And I just wanted folks to understand the depth of your commitment to this community. Westwood was a brand-new subdivision when we all moved in. There aren't too many of the original owners left, but there are a few. And I wanted to say that the median outside, the area around the mailboxes, the Westwood Park, would not exist except for the fact that we came, you and I, to the then-city council and protested and said, no, you cannot sign off on the conditions of approval for that thing because the developer hasn't finished his work. And that's what I think got us both into some of the work that we've done since then. By the way, the council listened, and they made sure that the developer did what he was supposed to do. So that was one of our early lessons in the fact that you actually can get things done if you persevere. And then you followed it up with 16 years on the Planning Commission, two different stints, filling in for others and doing two different stints there, as well as your time here on the city council. And I know that you are one of the most active volunteers on CBCA, and for that, we also thank you. And I know you will continue to be volunteering all over town, every event that CBCA has, you're not getting off the hook for that. So, and I, for one, value volunteerism. I think giving back to your community in all of those kinds of ways in a very hands-on community like we have is really important. So I want to thank you for that, and it has been an honor to serve with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you also for recognizing the service of Vice Mayor Shuey. You've served with him for many, many years, so you're speaking from a background of exposure to all that he has done and meant to the city. So yes, he's been a great asset, so we appreciate his service.
I have a comment. Yes, I had an opportunity to meet with David one-on-one prior to tonight's meeting, but right after the election. And the one thing, although he did express some disappointment with what the outcome was, he's still very positive on Clayton and all the things that we have and will continue to accomplish here, particularly the things that he was involved in, the Grove Park, the various other parks that we have in the community, that he personally was involved in assisting in the development of those. And he wants to see things to continue in a very positive manner. He was very upbeat, and he and I developed a closer relationship as a result of this. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Jim. Julia?
So I want to mention a few words as well. So I was going to mention some of the same things as Julie did, as in although you did four years in the city council, your commitment to the city was much longer than that, having served on the Planning Commission for many, many years, probably the longest time anyone has served on the Planning Commission. And then having also served on the, which I, what I believe was the original Trails and Landscaping Committee. So that's an awful long time to be committed to showing up at every hearing, to reading the materials and doing all of that. So that's an excellent contribution to the city. So I think, so one of the things, having started at the very original Trails and Landscaping Committee, I think it's very appropriate that what you did for the last few years, you also were the city's representative to the East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy Board. And in addition, leaving today as the mayor, you are also leaving that board as its last chair. So I think it's very appropriate that sort of got bookended that in that way. But I had the pleasure of serving with you on the Planning Commission many years ago, and in the last few years, obviously, having served with you on the council as a whole, but then also having served with you on the Budget and Audit Committee. And that was one of the assignments where we spent a number of meetings, hours, looking at line-by-line the budget items. And I think that it's just one example, but it's one example that really shows the type of, the level of sort of focus and attention to detail and the commitment and being prepared what you brought into the city. So I think it's just an example of type of public service that's very admirable, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Well, now the next item actually is going to be the administration of oaths to our two new city council people. We have two new members, Jeff Wan and C.W. She'll be the beliefs in the back. Oh, there he's hiding, okay.
You need to come up here, they need to come up here.
Yeah, we need to come up here and actually administer the oath.
Come on up, both of you. Don't be shy. You're going to be up here a lot from now on.
Do we have to sing a duo or?
All right. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and perform the oath of allegiance for public office, so if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I state your name.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to.
And allegiance to.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully discharge.
Well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Are we signing? Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
That's it? That was, that's it?
Now take a seat on the dais.
Oh, we sit up here now? I got a place for my glasses, finally, thank you. Do we just take any seat? It's me, that's you.
There we go. As we get, kind of chairs rearranged here a little bit temporarily until we rearrange them some more. As the senior member of the city council, that means I've been here the longest, you all know that, I will be conducting.
State senator wishes to make a presentation.
I'm sorry. Come on in. We're not really at public comment yet, but that's okay.
My apologies. I'm actually here on behalf of State Senator Steve Glazer. My name is George Escudia. I'm the senior field representative for California State Senator Steve Glazer. And although it's not public comment, I did want to present outgoing Mayor Hayden with a certificate of recognition for his years of service to the city of Clayton and to Contra Costa County and beyond.
Why don't you go up and?
So I do want to apologize for interrupting your proceedings.
That's all right.
But Keith, thank you for your service.
Well deserved.
It's been a pleasure. And the senator sends his one which is.
Thank you.
I think Tamara would like. Well deserved. Thank you. Thank you. As you probably heard, George, that Vice Mayor Shuey was unable to be here this evening, so you know how to get in touch with him. Okay, very good. All right, so I will be conducting the election for the role of mayor, and I'm looking at my agenda to get it exactly right. I would like to take my prerogative as the senior member of the council and nominate Tuya Catalano to be our next mayor. She has served very admirably since she was elected in 2016 and is very experienced. She is an attorney. She is very well-qualified to do this, and she's the only one on the outgoing council that has not yet been mayor, and so I want to nominate her to fill that seat. Are there any other nominations for mayor?
Well, she's already sitting in the chair, so.
All right. If there are no other nominations.
No, yeah, I'd like to speak. Is there going to be a second before we?
It's not necessary, there can be.
As I look back over the last election and all of the things that transpired and the challenges that we face in this next year, I find myself in a real difficult position in that I believe that in the past, we've always had someone that took the position of vice mayor first before ascending to the mayoral position. I think it benefits that person in terms of experience and the things that go into taking on that really, that front position. Although all the council members technically are equal in stature, the mayor does take the position as the administrative head of the council and opt more in the public than in the public eye than anyone else. And I think that not having that experience as the vice mayor, I'm going to nominate Julie Pierce to be the mayor.
I would decline that. Thank you.
So do we need a second for the?
You may second if you.
All right, I'll second the nomination of Tuya for mayor.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Tuya Catalano as our next mayor, please say aye.
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 I abstain from the vote.
Okay, very good. We hand the gavel to Tuya to conduct the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So we'll now move on to the next item, which is the election of the vice mayor.
Oh, boy.
And I'm actually going to take the initiative and make the first nomination. I'd like to nominate council member Pierce to be the vice mayor for the next year.
Thank you very much.
So are there any other nominations for vice mayor?
Well, had vice mayor, the nomination of Julie Pierce been for vice mayor, I would have nominated.
You're good? Okay, so all of those in favor of nominating Councilmember Pierce for the vice mayor, say aye.
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 And a c.
Okay, very well. So then, our next item is some recognitions and remarks by the council. And I think I'm going to start with the recognitions and I'm going to ask our former council member, Keith Hayden, to come up one more time. So we have one more thing to provide to Keith. So if you come up here. So we already gave you all the speeches and everything, but this is really just to recognize Keith in grateful appreciation for your service and leadership as being mayor for 2018 and being on the city council from 2014 to 2017.
Very nice.
Very good. Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And then we will open it up for any remarks by any of our new council members, perhaps, if you'd like to say anything, or any other council members.
Well, I'm humbled and I'm honored to be sitting here. I'm actually quite surprised and very pleased. I thank my supporters for coming out as they did to support me. And I also want to say to those that didn't support me that I hope that I can earn your trust and I will prove myself to you that I will work for all of Clayton for the next four years. And I congratulate Councilman Wan on his win. And certainly, we will work together to fill this divide that's come between us over this election. I've got to go back to the late President Bush, who said that just because you run against somebody doesn't make them your enemy. And I want to work with Councilman Wan and the rest of the council to make sure that Clayton continues to be the best that it can be. And I promise to work for all of Clayton. And I thank you, especially my friends here tonight who've shown up and came out in this cold, crazy night. So thank you very much and I appreciate it. I'm going to work hard for you.
If I may, I'd like to also welcome both new council members, Wan and Wolf. And it's going to be an interesting year, and I know that you both are up to the challenge and that you will meet those responsibilities that you have now. And hopefully, it'll be a little more eye-opening than you really saw before. And you'll see all of the technicalities and things that you need to do to fulfill this position as a representative of the community and all the other council members. But welcome, and I congratulate you both on your elections.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank my wife and my family. Without their support, literally, nothing I've ever accomplished would have happened. So they deserve most of the credit for all of this. And secondly, I would like to thank Councilmember Shuey. Even though we were opponents in this election, I appreciate his many years of public service and for the benefit of Clayton. I think that this election showed that there's been somewhat of an unmet desire for transparency, and I hope to address that during my tenure here, part of which will be, you know, regular updates on, in ways that we've, that I've already done through various social media platforms. I think with the tools that we have available today, there's really no reason that we can't meet people where they are. And I expect to continue to do that throughout the term. By running on a few key issues, I think that the voters were presented with a clear choice. And I look forward to working with the rest of the council to bring those things to fruition. So thank you.
I'd like to also welcome both of our new council members and say that we all look forward to working together as a team for the best for Clayton. That's where our hearts are. We all want what's the best for Clayton. And we will work together. And we may have some spirited discussions, but that's what it's all about, is having those discussions and maintaining a respect for each other's views and, but with the one goal in mind, it's all for the best of Clayton. Thank you.
Just a point of order, do we get cake at every meeting?
No. So before we head over to the cake, I want to mention just a few words as well. First, I do want to thank the council for electing me as the mayor. I will promise to do my best in the next year, and I look very much forward to it. And what I'm really hoping for is for the next year to be sort of very positive year in many ways. You know, the election season that we just had was, you know, very contentious and it was also very divisive, I think, for our city. And in some ways, you know, being divided as Clayton is nothing new for us. You know, if you look at our political affiliations, we are the most evenly split among registered Democrats and registered Republicans. So we are a very, very split city from that perspective. However, you know, we are, as divided as we are, for example, in political affiliation, we are also a city that comes together for a lot of things. You know, so as of today, I really, I really don't care, you know, who said what and when and where in terms of the election season. And I'm really hoping that, you know, we can, all of us, sort of leave all of that negativity behind and really move forward and be the community that we really can be and have been for a long time. So I do believe that every single council member sitting here today really wants what is best for Clayton. And I do believe, I have no doubt that our staff, that is also true of our staff. And I do think that every citizen in our city also wants what is best for Clayton. So regardless of how many years ago each of us moved here, I think most of us moved here because we saw something special about this community. And for many of us, Clayton's not just the place where we, as adults, wanted to live, move in, but it's, for a lot of us, it's the place where we want to raise our kids in and we want our great kids to grow up in. So whatever it is that makes kind of Clayton the special place for each of us, I do think it's worth it and I do want to kind of move forward in a very positive note from here. So as a small, you know, very, very small city, and we do have our challenges coming our way from other directions, from Sacramento and otherwise, so we don't need to spend our energy, you know, fighting each other. That does not mean that we cannot have differing opinions. We shouldn't voice those opinions. Absolutely, we should do those things. But I think we can do that constructively and I think we can do it in a way that improves Clayton. So I think for the next year, I really would like all of us to make a commitment to really work together and work towards improving Clayton and do it in a very constructive manner. I realize that even though I think all of our objective is to do what's best for Clayton, we may not always agree what's the best way to get there. So we may still have some disagreements on those, but I think the objective is for everybody is there. So I think that is what I wanted to say, and I think now, I think it's time we can take a social break for the cake that's waiting over there.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yeah. Very good.
Break for the cake.
We'll keep, we'll get going again.
The mayor means business.
Feel free to stay, stay and listen further.
Where's Councilman Diaz?
We have lost one council member, but we'll continue. We still have a quorum. So let's go on to our regular calendar, which we don't have a whole lot going on. But first, we do have reports. The first up is Planning Commission. There was no meeting, so we don't have a report for that. But for Trails and Landscaping Committee, there was a meeting on November 27th. I don't know if we have anybody here to give a report. We don't. Okay, so we'll take it up next time. And then, City Manager, Staff, Ms. Napper.
Thank you, Mayor Catalano, from Staff. Just a welcome to Councilmember Wan and Councilmember Wolf. We look forward to working with you and serving our community and working together to continue the fine legacy and history that we have here in Clayton. Congratulations to our new mayor and vice mayor. We look forward to working with you. As you both know, once you're the mayor and the vice mayor, there's a little more work with staff as well. Our thanks from the staff, just to Mayor Hayden and also Vice Mayor Shuey for all of their work. I know, as Councilmember Pierce, or Vice Mayor Pierce indicated, I've worked with Councilmember Shuey for 16 years of the 17 years that I was here, so, or have been here. So when we start working with that number of years, you get to know people personally, you begin to see, you know, what they do for the community behind the scenes. So my thanks to both he and Mayor Hayden for their works on the city behalf. The only real report I have, Mayor Catalano, is probably an interesting one. However, the City Hall staff met and we have figured out the days that we would like to close City Hall with the upcoming holidays. And so we're going to, we're going out early. We will be issuing the press release. We'll post this on the city website. We will post this on the doors to City Hall, also on our bulletin boards. But generally speaking, the City Hall services, our employees get Christmas Day and New Year's Day off as city holidays. The employees on third floor all got together and decided that they would like to take the entire week off from Christmas Eve Day through January 1st. That's not on city paid time, however, it's on their own personal accrued vacation time. So third floor, essentially, for people who are looking to do business with the city, you better get in before Monday, the December 24th, otherwise we'll be closed. I'm actually, as your city manager, supportive of the employees taking that time off. That's usually a very slow time period of the year. People are occupied with other things. And it helps actually, as a city manager, to get some of that paid time off the books so they're around when most people are wanting to access services. Our police station, which is on second floor, they've elected to be closed from police administrative offices on Christmas Eve Day and New Year's Eve Day, but the rest of the times, well, of course, including Christmas and New Year's Day, they will be open. When they're actually closed and people are wanting a police officer or whatnot, first of all, if it's an emergency, please call 911 at all times. Secondly, if you require a police officer during those time periods that are closed, the police department itself will continue to stay operational. They'll be in the field and you can call Police Dispatch and that number will be posted. And finally, the Clayton Maintenance Department, those employees out there, we allow them to make their own decisions in terms of how they want to work it. They'll be closed just on the holidays. So you will see our field personnel out and about during the holiday time period. And that's it, mayor.
Thank you. And then we'll go on to city council reports. So I don't know if either of you have any.
I have none.
Same.
Same. How about vice mayor?
Very brief. As many of you probably read in the East Bay Times, I attended the MTC workshop. It was at government rates, thank you very much. It was just as annoying to me as to everyone else to be all the way up in Sonoma County when we could have been in our headquarters. But we got a lot of really good work done in, so it was a valuable workshop. Attended the CBCA tree lighting on Saturday night. It was a beautiful evening. I think half of town was down there. And I have it on good authority that they will be hiring more carriages next year so that maybe everybody can actually get there. The very last people that got in the carriage at 7:15 were people who got there at 5:30. So it was a very, very popular event. And I just want to give a heads up. One of the things that I do is volunteer with the Clayton Historical Society and our Christmas Homes Tour is this coming Sunday from 11 to 5:00. And you can go to claytonhistory.org to get your tickets or down to the museum tomorrow afternoon between 2:00 and 4:00 or on Sunday at the event.
Thank you. So I only have two items to report. I attended the Clayton Library Foundation Board Meeting on Wednesday, November 28th. I have been for the last year, the liaison for the city council to that board. And then, obviously, I was also at the tree lighting ceremony. I'm sure a lot of us were there as well. So that concludes our report. So then we'll move on to public comment, and this is the section of the meeting when any member of the public can speak on any item that's not on the agenda. I don't have any speaker cards, but if anybody would like to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and write your comments.
Frank Cavidia, 104 Gold Rush Court. I'll be brief. Congratulations. That's mainly what I wanted to come up here and say. The comments about how divisive the election was, I don't necessarily agree with that. But I do want to start on a positive note, and it's kind of disappointing that the person that I want to say this to isn't here. Yeah, I too want to thank Councilman Shuey for all of his years here on the council. We disagreed, that's all it was. He once spoke about how we couldn't unring the bell and that we were neighbors, and we are, we're neighbors. There were some of us who disagreed with a lot of what went on this year. And we had an election and we had the results. But I wouldn't say that we're this awful divided town. We just disagreed. It got heated. That happens. This is America. And past, those who are familiar with American history, I believe that they used to settle it with duels at one point. This wasn't a duel. It just got heated. It's America. There's no dictatorships here. We get to vote and we have freedom of speech. Councilman Wolf, you said something that I did agree with, that regardless of where we stood on this, that we all love Clayton. And that was one thing that I agreed with you very, very much. How much do I love Clayton? I have something here that I, I don't have, didn't bring the original because it's put away in a box for safety. This is a reprint from July of 2010, from the Fourth of July Parade, the third, I think it's the third picture down when they used to do the picture award. That's my daughter and Jim Gamble's daughter. I love this town. I grew up across the bay. Trust me, folks, life over there is not like it is here. That's why I came here. And yeah, we had, some of us were just very concerned. We don't want to turn into what it looks like across the bay. Heck, we don't want to turn into Walnut Creek. So the election's over. I, for one, will do my part to, quote, heal the divide. You know, I want to participate and help too, but I just wanted to bring up the point. It wasn't that big of a deal. It was just an election. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and then let's move on to the rest of the items. So item, next item is public hearings. We do not have any action items. We also have none. Are there any council items that any of the council members would like to bring into a future meeting? None at this time. And then we have no closed session, so we are adjourned until our meeting on December 18, 2018. And then with that, I'd also like to then call into an order, we do have one other agenda today. I'd like to call to an order the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District Meeting for December 4, 2018. I'd like the record to reflect that all board members are here with the exception of Board Member Diaz. And now we do have two new board members, obviously, who are now seated on that board as well. So the very first item we have is public comment. And again, this is the portion of the meeting when any member of the public could address the Jihad on any item that's not on the agenda. I don't have any speaker cards and I don't see anybody rushing the podium, so we will close public comment. We'll move on to consent calendar.
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
So there's a, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there are no, no one opposing. And then we'll move on to the annual reorganization of the Board of Directors for the Jihad. So this is the moment when I'd like to see if there are any nominations. I am the current chair for the last year, so we would like to select a new chair. Are there any nominations for the chair for the next year?
You know what? I think this would be a really good opportunity for one of our new council members to learn about the Jihad. We don't have a tremendous amount of business. It's not an overly overbearing job, but I'm not sure, but I think both of you are members of the Jihad in one way or another, so.
I'll nominate Mr. Wolf. Well, I was.
I'll nominate Mr. Wolf.
I was going to nominate Jim.
Well, you know, he's not here, so, you know, I.
Well, that's his problem then.
I understand that. So I'll nominate C W to chair that, and I might even.
Am I able to decline this at this point or? No, no.
I wouldn't advise it.
Okay, yeah, of course.
And I would suggest, actually, that.
Are there any nominations for the chair for the next year?
You know what? I, I think, um, this would be a really good opportunity for one of our new council members to learn about the Jihad. We don't have a tremendous amount of business. It's not an overly overbearing job. But I'm, I'm not sure, but I think both of you are members of the Jihad in one way or another, so, um.
I'll nominate Mr. Wolf. Well, I was.
I'll nominate Mr. Wolf.
I was going to nominate Jim.
You know, he's not here, so, um, you know, I.
Well, that's his problem, then.
I understand that. So I'll nominate C W to, to chair that. And I might even.
Am I able to decline this at this point, or? No, no.
I wouldn't advise it.
Okay, yeah, of course.
And I would suggest, actually, that, that Jeff, you might want to be the vice chair. I mean, it's, it's not a hard job to do, but it's an opportunity to learn how the Jihad works and what it's all about. And even if you've paid the taxes into it for years, that doesn't necessarily mean you understand what it's all about. And it's a really good opportunity to get into the nuts and bolts of it.
Two newcomers, sure.
Okay. And I assume there are no other nominations, so we have a nomination.
I tried the Jim thing, and obviously, that didn't work, so.
So we have a nomination for the chair, the B C W Wolf. And we have a nomination for the vice chair to be Mr. Wan. So are there, with no other nominations, all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 So that is unanimous.
It won't be painful, I promise.
So then. It is up to you now to conduct the rest of the agenda.
Uh, we're, we're, we are adjourned.
Not quite so fast.
Okay, where are we here, Tuya?
Right after the.
Five public hearings.
Number five, public hearings? We have no public hearings. We have no action items. Let's see, board items, limited to requests and directives for future meetings. Are there any? None, okay. So now, we are adjourned. Do I, do I need to call for a second on adjournment? Or we just, no? Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you all for coming.
Wow, that was a powerful thing.
Take some cake home.
Yeah, there's a lot of cake over there.